Afternoon, everybody. Please remain standing while the Mayor's Chaplain offers prayers. Thank you.
Using our gifts is building community. If we are not faithful to our gifts, we are harming the community and each of its members as well. So it is important that all members know what their gifts are, use them and take responsibility for developing them. It is important that the gift of each member is recognised and that each is accountable to the others for the use to which the gift is put. We all need each other's gifts. We must encourage their growth and our fidelity to them. Everyone will find their place in community according to their gift. They will become not only useful but unique and necessary to others. And so rivalry and jealousy will evaporate. God grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, courage to change the things we can and the wisdom to know the difference. He make this prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Please be seated. Right, everybody. There are no plans for a fire alarm test. If you hear the alarm, please leave the building by the nearest exit. Please, can you ensure your mobile phones are switched off or on silent? Restrooms are located on all floors, but please ask a member of staff for details should you require one. And please note that this meeting is being recorded and will eventually be loaded onto the council's YouTube channel. Can I please remind all members that whilst we can disagree politically, please remain respectful to each other whilst dealing with council business? Now, members of the public, members and officers, you are reminded that under the openness of Local Government Bodies Regulations 2014, the press and public may film, audio record, photograph and use social media whilst this meeting is in progress. The party items only, and as long as there's no disruption is caused to the meeting. Anyone filming is asked to focus their attention on elected members rather than other visitors. Now, before we start the main part of the meeting, can I first bring in our newest elected member, councillor Hodgson, to introduce himself to council before we begin? Councillor Hodgson goes.
Thank you very much. I just want to say a huge thank you to everyone for their warm welcome. I look forward to working with all of you to deliver not just for my ward Ashton but for Preston as well. And I can honestly say that it's a huge privilege to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Hodgson, and welcome. Now, a reminder that Carols in the Chamber is being held on Wednesday, the 17th of December, my favourite time of the year, as you all know, with a 6:30pm reception and carols at 7pm. Tickets are just £10, including an arrival drink and mince pie, and they are available to purchase direct from me. All proceeds will go to my mayoral charities and I do hope you can all attend to support the charities and enjoy a lovely evening in the process. Thank you, and I promise I won't sing. Now, as you know, Movember is taking place and I'm aware that some of our members and officers, and I'll leave you to guess who they are, have grown a moustache to take part, all in aid of raising vital funds that go towards raising awareness and investment for men's health. I'd like to thank all those taking part for supporting such a great charity. Now, on to the business of the day. And before we do move on to the main agenda item, I must advise you that the decision on the local government reorganisation is one for Cabinet and this has been determined following legal advice. Item two on the agenda are declarations of interests. Can members indicate if they have any discloseable pecuniary interests or personal and prejudicial interests in the item being discussed on the agenda? Councillor Potter.
Thank you, Madam. Yeah, just a personal but not prejudicial interest that I am a member of Lancashire County Council. I did have a vote on this same item last week where I made my views known. So like I say, it's personal but prejudicial and that goes the same for councillor Duke in my group as well.
Thank you. Councillor Brown.
Exactly the same for myself, thank you.
Councillor Bailey.
Yeah, I'm an employee at Lancashire County Council.
Right, item three is a report on local government reorganisation. A summary paper to the LGR report was published yesterday. A copy is on your seats. Councillor Brown, will you be moving this report, please?
Yeah, Madam, I will be doing, yes. So obviously, we're here today to discuss and debate the biggest changes in local government in Preston and Lancashire for over 50 years. These are obviously huge changes that will benefit and affect all our communities. My own position is I've always supported the creation of unitary authorities to replace the two-tier structure, which I believe is holding it back. But what I would say is I think the requirements to have a 500,000 population is too large. So this is why we're putting forward our proposals today for Lancashire to make sure that the councils are more directly accountable to our communities and of a significant size. The Four Lancashire Proposes in the era is delivering the best in terms of size and connected with communities and the next deadline in the local government reorganisation process is the 28th of November 2025. So obviously, every council that's going through this has to submit final proposals to the government and this will conclude stage two of the government's seven-stage process. All 15 Lancashire councils have agreed to make a single submission that includes five different proposals. These proposals are supported by common shared evidence based on the government's request. Preston City Council is one of six local authorities who have worked collectively to develop a proposal for four new unitary authorities, the Four Lancashire Proposal. The full business case for the Four Lancashire Proposes is attached to this report and it is this document councils are asked to endorse. In the Four Lancashire Proposal, Preston will be part of a new unitary authority covering the current Preston, Ribble Valley and Lancaster council area footprint. Our proposal has been developed through a rigorous process for assessment and evaluation. All five longlist options were first assessed against the government's six criteria to create a short list of just two. The two remaining options, three or four unitaries, were then evaluated against the local objectives for reorganisation. That included detailed analysis of the financial, economic and service delivery impact of the remaining two options. That analysis identified Four Lancashire as a preferred option to take forward. Our option will simplify governance, improve service delivery and align with economic corridors. It balances scale for efficiency and local identity and will enable neighbour tailored services and stronger community engagement. The model also addresses fragmentation, supports integrated place-based approaches with stakeholder backing and will provide a sound basis for a new mayoral strategic authority alongside an elected mayor of Lancashire, something that we've needed, I would argue, in this county for a long time and the fact we don't have it is held in spite. In terms of timescales, after proposals have been received by government, stage three will commence in the new year when the government launches a statutory public consultation on the proposals. This will then run to stages four to seven, including a formal decision on which proposal the government will take forward. There'll then be a statutory change order and secondary legislation. And elections to the shadow authorities, new authorities, will take place in May 27 to oversee the transition period and the extensive work in the transition period to prepare the arrangements for the new authorities. The process will conclude on the 1st of April 2028, when Preston City Council will cease to be a legal entity. And this will be also the other 11 district councils, the county council and the unitary councils will cease to be and then will become the new authority and the shadow authorities will end. This reorganisation of the local government is of great significance. It ends this current two-tier structure of local government that's been in place since 1974. It's accepted the structure has not best served the place and economy of our city. However, the scale of unitary authority proposed by government will see the loss. We'll see Preston as its distinctive place authority. As we all know, Preston is of ancient heritage. We had our first royal charter in 1179. This charter did not mark the foundation of Preston but marks the recognition of it being a place of significance and it's accepted as the anniversary date of the then town now city in Preston. In 29 will mark the 850th anniversary of the granting of that charter. Our current mayor is the 697th person to hold that role, which is something of real significance. And the next Preston Guild to be celebrated in 2032 is a new, unique survivor of the ancient guild celebrations of old and its celebration, once every 20 years, is of cultural, civic and historical significance to Preston and the White region. And whilst we seek to embrace the opportunities presented by this reorganisation, we will seek to ensure the historic and economic significance of Preston is recognised and enhanced within the future arrangements. So in terms of the proposal, what we've developed is a vision for what local government reorganisation in Lancashire can achieve. The vision is to create local government that's radical in ambition, creative in design and innovative in its delivery. We want it to be closely connected to our communities, provide a strong platform for economic prosperity and drive the transformation of public services through investment in early intervention, which is something that is needed badly, I would say, across the whole county. The Four Lancashire aims to simplify governance, improve service delivery and align with economic corridors. It balances scale for efficiency and local identity, enabling tailored services and stronger community engagement. The model addresses a fragmentation, supports integrated place-based approaches with stakeholder backing. And from our perspective, the proposal for Preston, Lancaster and Ribble Valley will enable us to meet our priorities. Both Preston and Lancaster strongly support community wealth building strategies and this new council will be a major purchaser with a budget of £400 million. It'll be a major employer and landholder where we can support local businesses, recruit residents in less well-off areas, have the organisation as a real living wage employer and expand the democratic economy. In terms of our own commitment, we've been committed to delivering new council housing in Preston, which we will do before our council comes into an end. However, it will be a lot easier when we inherit a housing revenue account again, as well as significant landholdings, to really expand the social economy for our residents who need a social home. We would have control of local schools and obviously there's been a huge disappointment from the county council in what they're doing with schools. The city's developed and when we signed the city deal, we did not envisage that the schools would not be coming alongside the houses. So we'd be in charge of the schools, we'd be in charge of adult social care and we'd seek, if we were in charge, to challenge the extractive nature of that sector through insourcing and looking at more democratic ownership models such as cooperatives. We would seek a GM-style bus franchising arrangement and look to establish a publicly owned bus company. Look what Andy Burnham's done for public transport in Greater Manchester. It's been amazing. And Lancaster also has a similar commitment to tackle climate change. And crucially, in this document, we worked with communities through 42 new neighbourhood governance arrangements to make sure that local voices were heard. This is by far the strongest option we have. Within the new council area, there'll be three universities, there'll be two hospitals in the local authority. We get a significant part of British Aerospace Sarnsbury and the new Cyberforce Centre, which will be a high paying employer. But we'd also get the Eden Project North and some amazing stretches of outstanding beauty, including the Forest of Boland. These four unitary councils, working collectively through a mayoral strategic authority, will enable radical improvements in public services whilst kickstarting fair and equitable economic growth. The councils are based on credible geographies and recognisable communities, while also simplifying the structures of local government and accountability. The population sizes of each unitary are of a scale that is comparable to existing unitary authorities. So if you look at Greater Manchester, they have councils of a similar size or even smaller. The model will also improve public services through prevention and early intervention, neighbourhood working and community empowerment in economic growth and connectivity. So obviously, this is a historic day for Preston City Council. We're basically bringing the council to an end, but we're creating something new which we think will be a lot better. Obviously, government have dictated we go through this process. I know there's views who would like to keep the status quo, but I think for the reasons I've said, the status quo isn't working and a sensible reorganisation based around our values and connected to communities can really enhance the lives of people in our city. So thank you, Madam, and I look forward to the debate.
Thank you, councillor Brown. And just so you know that I did allow the clock to carry on in the interest of this being such an important issue. I did allow extra time and I will afford that to others as well. Do we have a second for this report, please? Councillor Rollinson, do you wish to speak now?
Thank you. Now, I have on my notes, do we have any amendments? But we're not doing that now, are we?
So, debate, do we have anybody who wishes to speak on this item? Councillor Potter, I've seen you first, but I'll write everybody down, so I don't know if you wish to start. Councillor Potter.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you to the leader for moving this report. This has been a report that's been a long time coming. We've been talking about some sort of local government reorganisation for the entire time I've been on this council because, like the leader, I believe two-tier authorities have probably had their day. I think as much as I respect and appreciate the wonderful work this council does, I have to accept the fact that the vast majority of services are delivered by Lancashire County Council, which is a monstrosity of a supersized council that needs to be split up. And so to do that, we have to go through LGR. Now, I would also like to thank Matthew for coming to ONS just then. Obviously, it's a very busy day for him. There's lots of information. There were 315 pages of data in the Lancashire County Council report, several hundred pages of data in the report we've had here and Preston City Council. I will say, I think it's slightly sad that we can't do a vote of recommendation for Cabinet. I completely understand that the ultimate decision is within Cabinet to do that, but I think it would have been far stronger for us to have cross-party support for this rather than a Cabinet chosen solely by one party, solely by the leader of one party, instead of saying actually with more or less one voice, this council would have agreed to a four-unitary model. I think that is an opportunity missed. I also think that it isn't a great look, given that the Cabinet report will also suggest cancelling elections next year. So I think that coupled with not allowing a vote of recommendation here in this chamber is again, it's a little bit sad and I don't think it puts you in the best light and I think that could have easily been avoided. In regards to the actual proposals, we had a very lively discussion chaired by my colleague councillor Duke on Friday. There are colleagues in our group that are in favour of the three option rather than the four and I completely respect that. I can see decent arguments for both three and four in terms of improving the lives of people in those areas and improving the lives of Lancashire as a whole. We've seen proposals from reform at county that wanted a ginormous two-authority to cover the whole of Lancashire, despite complaining about LGR limiting democracy going forward. It then chose the worst one of all the options going, which was, as I said in county last year, it takes a certain amount of mental gymnastics to try and square that circle. And Matthew, I'm going to steal your line from ONS. What reformer advocate is regional government, not local. And both three and four, and in my preference has always been for the four, is actually it retains a good local structure to it. It means, and I made this point at county last week, that in those 315 pages that the county officers put forward, not one page then talked about democratic accountability. Given that all new councils will be limited to just 100 councillors, potentially, and I should also point out, reform said if they had the legal power, they would have done one single authority for the whole of Lancashire, potentially putting up to 16,000 people per councillor in that new authority, which is by any stretch of the imagination bonkers. And like I say, not what local government is about. And I think of someone, because I've gone from several things. I had a very small ward when I was just a Cadley Ward councillor and then it got reorganised to double the size when I became a county councillor. And so the idea of having these giant monolithic, huge mega councils is an anathema to anyone that values local democracy and actually making sure we have a connection to place and people. In terms of four, I think, as the leader has put out, I think it puts strong proposals for an economic powerhouse in the centre of Lancashire with the goodness of that would filter to all other areas. Now, there are lots of opinions on this, as we've seen. There are five options. I mean, the government did ask if all of Lancashire could come together and agree on it and I think all of us knew that that was never really going to happen. There are vested interests, people who are thinking about careers, jobs, what's going to happen next. But what we have to make sure we remember is about the services we produce and that's what's important. And that's why I want Lancashire County Council to not exist any longer because I don't think they're efficiently producing their services. And I think a new four-unitary authority is the best way. It's not perfect. There will still be random borders that make no sense, you know, but we'll fix some of those random borders that don't make sense at the moment, such as Longridge being split between two different authorities, making zero sense whatsoever. That will be fixed. However, some people, and I'm sure we're here today, think that, you know, lots of people in Penrith might think of themselves as Prestonians. There is no perfect solution to this. There will never ever be a perfect solution to this. But for me, the four-unitary authority offers the best chance going forward to balance of democratic accountability, a sustainable structure of local government locally and being able to serve residents and get good services. So I look forward to this debate. I look forward to LGR actually happening and I know it will be messy and it'll be hard and it's going to put enormous strain on our offices where we have to be patient because some of the things we want day in, day out, week in, week out, will be slower because they're dealing with the biggest reorganisation in 50 years and it's going to be hard for us to do, but we will have to do it because the end goal, and when I talk to those Lib Dem leaders in charge of places like Westmoreland and Furness now, who've gone through this process, yes, it's painful, yes, it's messy, but you can get better at the end. And they're already seeing improvements in their send results as a result of the organisation they've come through. So let's, we don't have a vote on this, I say, which is a shame, so I was going to finish off by saying let's vote for this, but we can't. But I look forward to a brighter, better future with Preston in a four-unitary model. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Potter. Councillor Guy, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So yeah, I'm supportive of unitarisation in general. I think it's sensible to have the same body responsible for all local services, more or less. So if only for that reason, so that the perpetual confusion about who does what more or less goes away or at least is massively reduced. It may not entirely go away in areas with parish and town councils, but the situation will certainly get better. I think the arguments about cost savings and economies of scale are a bit of a red herring. I don't believe reorganising councils can solve the budget problems in local government. That's driven by statutory requirements like social care, send provision and so on. So I would design the carve-up of Lancashire with accessibility at the front of my mind, if it were, if it were up to me. I would argue against going too big with each unitary because you'll destroy any sense of place that each council might have and make the organisation too big and faceless. And I was going to invoke the LCC example as well. It's an organisation that is so big and remote, it's like pulling teeth just to get someone on the phone. And I say that as someone who, amongst other things, answers a council phone for a living. So I would frankly prefer a unitary which is as small as government will let us get away with. And so I'm happy to voice my support for the Four Lancashire option. I think as a former resident of Cleveleys for several years, I just wanted to put in a word for the Fylde Peninsula as well because I think we have to think of areas besides ourselves. And the Fylde Peninsula has a historic character of all of its own. You know, if I talk about the Fylde Peninsula, you can all picture it in your heads. You all know where I'm talking about. And I think if you have an area that's roughly the right size for a unitary with a, you know, a shared character and a pre-existing name, why not turn it into a unitary? And the Four Lancashire basically does make use of that historic and geographical inheritance. I think the, I've talked about the silly horseshoe shape that our unitary will take on before. I've highlighted it at a previous full council in our online briefing and in a letter to the leader. So I've probably done that to death by now. But it would make more sense if our unitary, if the Four Lancashire model goes ahead, included Garstang and the A6 corridor. And also really, by the time you've got that far east, you aren't talking about Fylde Peninsula anymore. So that would sort of counteract my previous argument if it stays with them. So I think transferring that area would not just help in practical terms, but also would help when it comes to the sense of place that I've been referring to. In our private group discussion that councillor Potter referred to, I thought the divergence between myself and councillor Ward was interesting. Councillor Ward can't be here today, so I'm free to misrepresent his position. But we both live in Preston, yet work in Penrithum. And still this led to very different conclusions on, in both of us, on where the natural boundaries lie. For me, when I go over the river, that's another place, mainly because of politics. Here I'm a councillor, there I'm an officer. I have to conduct myself very differently over there than I do here. So I feel like the river is a natural boundary for me and each of us will have our sort of own personal prejudices that are born of this sort of thing. Councillor Ward feels very differently, partly because he works in a school and he tells me the catchment areas of schools very much overlap the river. So, you know, it's not simply where we work, but even the nature of the work we do makes us feel that the boundary belongs in different places. And then the final thing I wanted to mention was about the absence of a vote. Because I do, I agree with councillor Potter. I think it's a bit silly to call us all here to give a speech about what we think without asking council itself to give a view as a corporate body with a vote to confirm council's recommendation to Cabinet, accepting, of course, that Cabinet is the decision-making body. I mean, we can deliver our thoughts on, our verbal thoughts on YouTube. You know, we can write an open letter on Facebook, but the reason to have council here is to learn what council thinks as a corporate body and we're not getting the chance to do that today. Most of the other Lancashire districts which operate a cabinet system are nevertheless extracting a recommendation from their full councils to Cabinet. And it's disappointing to me that for some reason the leader is preventing that happening in Preston. That was all I wished to say. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Guy. Councillor Colbacky, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Could I just say that I fully support, you know, the creation of unitary authorities? It's long overdue and I've got to say that was nearly swayed by Matthew's excellent summary there. Interchange in my mind, but I've not. There's a few things I want to say as a Prestonian. I want to say that South Ribble is a relatively new borough created in 1974 from large parts of Preston, Preston Rural District, Leyland and Blatton Rural District. I'm not implying that there was any gerrymandering or vested interest in the formation of this concocted borough, but it served the interests of the local Conservative Party really well because they helped power there from 1974 to 1995. To many local people and visitors to the area, South Ribble appears as an artificial and anomalous construct. Demographically, geographically and historically, South Ribble is generally perceived by many locals as part of a large conurbation centred around Preston. Many would argue that having this thriving and productive conurbation could create a sense of community. Obviously, you know, the locality, the density of population could create this. You know, having this thriving and productive conurbation split into two administrative areas has stopped the area from securing suitably large infrastructure, transport and recreational projects appropriate to the needs of its burgeoning population. Indeed, we have seen money and investment stream to the larger and more successful conurbations of Manchester and Liverpool over the last 50 years. There is no doubt, in my mind at least anyway, that this part of Lancashire has occasionally suffered from a lack of administrative coordination. suffered from a lack of administrative coordination, shared strategic vision and limited cross-borough planning. I know we've got the local plan, but it has, you know, it's, it's stopped Preston and the local area from getting a lot of things which maybe it should have had. Central Lancashire and Chorley, along with East Lancashire and the Fylde Coast Morecambe Bay area or corridor, whatever you want to call it, is one of three population concentrations in Lancashire. Option three, in my opinion, combining Preston, South Ribble, Chorley and West Lancashire, is probably the most balanced in population distribution and potentially, even though I can see the merits of option four, most logically effective in delivering services quickly and economically. It is centred on obvious population density, as I said before, and although large, and it will, could have equal distribution, it does have, in my opinion, I've looked into this, equal distribution of urban and rural areas and a sensible distribution of economically challenged and more prosperous areas. Now, Adrian gave an excellent presentation last week. Thank you very much, Adrian. And there were certain criteria in that presentation, which were, I think they were national. It should, a couple of them were, they should be based on sensible economic areas and geographies, supported by robust evidence and analysis, which has been done. Proposals should prioritise high quality and sustainable public services, avoiding unnecessary fragmentation. I won't read out all the criteria, but I suggest that the council's preferred model with its, well, its new political boundaries and constructs may not meet at least two of those criteria. A service provision, local administration and accessibility could become seriously fragmented over such a large geographical area. Local governance could also be compromised, both financially and logistically, as council meetings and councillors could become itinerant, and they probably will be, whichever, whichever option we go for. If we do not support option three, aligning with South Ribble, Chorley and West Lancashire, we will lose a once in a generation opportunity to serve our local community and secure its future prosperity. In my opinion, only option three. I know there are merits in option four, and I do see that, so I'm not, I'm not completely dismissing it. Option three could give us a better chance, or the people of central Lancashire a better chance of improving local transport networks, creating new transport links serving our wider community, providing cohesive, sensible and accessible structures for education and social welfare, while coordinating and centralising local government rationally. Overall, option three would probably be the most cost-effective, in my opinion, and it's the most logical and obvious option to support. And I don't understand how it's been, you know, the other one's been chosen, but that's not for me to talk about now. Before coming here, I spoke to many local people who live both sides of the river. They are anxious about a lack of coordination of transport links, educational provision, as we've already mentioned, as colleague Dan Daniels mentioned, and other services. Our hospital could be in Lancaster, said one, one local resident in Sherre Green. My children went to primary school in Preston, secondary school in Penwithham, and then Newman College, said another. This, well, to conclude, I think as a council, we've got to remove our preset ideas, our prejudices and political partisanship, and work together for the good of the community. And I don't think option four is necessarily the best option or the most utilitarian option for, for the community of central Lancashire and Chorley. And I think option three would serve Preston, South Ribble, Chorley, West Lancashire and the whole of Lancashire far better. But my question, what, the whole, the whole crux of this is, why hasn't there been a proper and diligent cross-party process and consultation for this? You know, we're not even going to get a vote today. And I would, you know, I would like to know why we have, why we're not being given a vote. We should, we should have formed a cross-party committee. I know there's not time, you know, obviously it might not be feasible, but at least we should have done that and we should have explored all the options together, you know, rather than on party political, you know, preconceptions. I'm not going to say that there obviously, there's been pressure from, you know, anybody to, you know, to come up with this from externally, but we, we've missed a real opportunity here, to get together as a council and work together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah. Initially, I think I stood up and said that I was quite happy with the Labour proposal to include the, the shires, the, the option that you suggested, sorry. So, and I've been thinking about this, and there's a number of reasons why I don't really want to support it. And one of them, of course, is that I've joined Reform and County Reform, and they've suggested the two option. So I thought I'll just get that out before councillor Potter brings it to your attention. So that is one. But seriously, on a, on a bigger scale is that the Newton Report suggested that you would need a population of round about half a million people to make it sustainable. And that is a lot of people and it's a big area, yes, but there are mechanisms that you can use to actually cope with a bigger area. Certain committees could be formed to deal with specific geographical areas. And it is difficult. We've got the Preston Guild, we've got Preston Identity. There's also Lancaster, that's got its own identity as well. So I think you've got to move on from those things. And actually, you've got to look at the, the costings of how you're going to make this work. Because at the end of the day, people have got to pay the council tax to make these things work. And it was interesting that councillor Guy said that the cost is a bit of a red herring. He said that because the Liberal Council in Somerset, they've got £63 million support and they've put the council tax up by 6.7%. So, but that, you can't do that with people. This is people's lives. They need to get the services at a sustainable cost. And the, the scale of a bigger authority would make it, it would spread the load more evenly and it would actually be beneficial to people from challenging backgrounds as well as people from a more wealthy background. The other thing that the, the bigger proposal takes care of, I was looking at this, living in Barton, I'm very aware of the A6 and the chaos that was going on up and down there on daily basis, especially if something goes wrong on the motorway. And the A6 corridor is particularly important to the prosperity of the area. And I think the problem with the Garstang bulge, as I like to call it, is it's, is it, the actual A6 corridor will be split between authorities. And I think we've got a real opportunity, or we had a real opportunity, to actually bring that bulge back into one authority, because it is going to become more and more important for the economic development of the area. And I think it does need a good looking at that A6 corridor. So, yeah, so I'll make this short, I'm not going to, I mean, at the end of the day, the Labour Party and the Labour Group have the, have the democratic advantage and that, that's what they've earned, so they, they make the decisions. So I'm not too bothered about us all having a say in this, because actually, we do have a say now. And are we going to influence the Labour Group? I don't think so. Maybe, possibly not. So I think we are where we are and we, we've got an opportunity to, to discuss it today. And I've said my piece. And so I would prefer to go with the two bigger authorities, which could be dealt with. And all of the differences in areas could be dealt with by committees. So, yeah, and I think investment in, in the past, certainly some of these successful areas like Manchester, et cetera, that's because they've got, they had a lot more funding. And the funding doesn't come out into the shires, as it's been described as, into the countryside and, and the smaller areas. And I think we need to sort of have a look around as well, move out of the rural areas and look at, move out of the built-up areas and look at the rural areas, what problems they have. And I think this is an opportunity to do that, at least whichever option we take. So I hope that happens and I hope that, you know, the Labour Group can actually look beyond just Preston City and look further afield. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Darby, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first and foremost, I, I think it's worth saying that, that the change is necessary and long overdue. Whether we go for three authorities or four authorities, the unitaries are going to be much better than the current two-tier system. I think the two-tier system has had its day. It's not working the way that it used to do. And I think you've ended up with, with councils ended up working against each other. We've seen that in Preston, we've talked about the schools already, for example. And we've had issues and sometimes residents falling between the cracks between the two authorities. So having one unitary will be a great improvement. And I do want to give a thank you to all the members, in particular the officers, not just from within Preston, but beyond the authority, who have done all the legwork involved with pulling together all of these options, weighing the pros and the cons and giving us the recommendations. However, I will say I agree with councillor Colbacky that I personally think that while both the three or the four authority options both have a great deal of merit, I personally fall down on the side of a free, the free authority model. We've talked about already how communities should be first and foremost, what we're thinking about in terms of how any new authority is constructed. And being smaller is better. I agree with that. But actually, I don't think that's necessarily all about the number of people. I think geography matters at the end of the day. And I think that people within central Lancashire as a whole, whether it's Preston, South Ribble, Chorley, I think perhaps they feel closer together than, for example, Preston and Lancaster. I think the free authority option meets an awful lot of the guidelines that were put forward by government in the first place. And at the end of the day, regardless of what we're saying, regardless of what council decides later, it's going to be the government that actually make that decision. And trying to hit those guidance points is really quite important if we want them to take seriously what it is that we're putting forwards. If you look at pages 30 and 31 of the papers that we've got, you've got two different maps that show the breakdown of where the rural and urban, urban settlements within Lancashire as a whole are. It shows you where the economic centres within Lancashire are. And you can see how the free authority model that is put forward nicely encapsulates the largest single bubble of both economic and urban, urban settlements within Lancashire as a whole. And we should really be looking to build on that existing economic centre in particular. The papers again talk about that's focusing on the here and now rather than the future. But actually, you get to the future by starting from the here and now. And you only have to look at the existing agreements and structures that we have across authorities at the moment, such as the central Lancashire planning, the city deal, local plan, all of which take into consideration those authorities that will be in the free authority model rather than the four. And we've talked a little bit already about efficiency, I know it's been mentioned. And again, I think geography matters, whether you're looking at schools, whether that's school buses, school placements, school catchment areas, even if you're looking at send, waste collection, public transport, roads, social care, all of which geography has a huge impact on how we as an authority can deliver those services. And I think that the free authority model is a much better place to be able to do that. And finally, talking about connectivity between the centres within any authority. And I know that councillor Guy and councillor Thompson have both mentioned that A6 corridor. If we are going to go down the four authority route, I do hope that that is taken forward as an option, because it seems ridiculous not to have your two main centres within an authority not be connected like that. I do also want to echo the disappointment about not having a vote. If we're only here to note something, councillor Brown, you said at the start, this is perhaps the most important thing that we've discussed within this chamber, the, the, the end of Preston City Council in its current form. And yet we're not actually having a vote on that. It doesn't feel right. However, I will say both the free model and four authority model provides improvement for residents, which has to be our priority. And the one last thing I would like to say is looking into the future is, I hope, and it's been talked about on and off, and I really hope it'll be taken forward, is considering whether or not we want a parish level council for Preston as a whole to look after our unique heritage, whether it's the role of the mayor, Preston Guild, and just generally providing an extra layer of service. I, I sit on a neighbourhood council myself in England-Tanston. I've seen what that level of council can do for people. And having that for Preston within the scope of a wider authority, I think would be very helpful. I hope that is taken forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Henshaw, please. Sorry.
Is it, is it possible for us to take a vote along the lines that's been suggested? What would it take for us to do it?
The report is presented by the leader of the council. It's his option to make an alteration to that report, entirely within the gift of the, the leader who is presenting this report to council.
Thank you. I think, I think we need to, to be honest. I mean, in many ways it is symbolic because the cabinet decides, but I think in terms of the significance of the decision, we do need to take a vote. So if we could arrange the alteration, can that be relatively quickly, Chief Executive?
Madam Mayor, if we can agree a short amendment at some point, we will come back with the formal words that the leader can agree to and present to council.
Okay. We'll do it.
Okay. We'll finish with the speakers first, councillor Brown, and then we'll have a short adjournment. Thank you. Thank you for that, councillor Darby. Councillor Henshaw, I've got next on my list, please.
Yes, thank you. So I haven't prepared a long speech or anything, and I probably wasn't going to speak, but there's a few things that I wanted to say. And I was going to start by also recognising the work of all the officers, because the amount of work that's gone into this, looking at all the different scenarios, the financials, everything, they've, they've done a huge amount of work and it really should be applauded. I want to say definitely Lancashire County Council's had its day and we do need, we do need a change. I am in favour of option four because of the smaller is better, basically. But having gone to school in Penwithham, having family in Penwithham, having, sharing a postcode with Penwithham, it, it does seem crazy that, that, you know, we're not giving more of a serious consideration to option three. But I do want to let, well, I was remembering, because I've had a really good debate with myself as being the only independent, I wanted to say that as well. Councillor Saxena read out some information from, I think, the transcript of the early seventies when the last LGR. And I think it was councillor Colbacky talked about prejudice, wasn't it? South Ribble didn't want to be with us. They made it perfectly clear in the seventies that they didn't want to be with us because they didn't want to lose their identity. And they've done that again this time around. They don't want to be with us. So therefore, let's embrace a change. Yes, Lancaster's up the road. Yes, I'd like to include Garstang, they're a fair trade town, I, I think we are as well. I would very much like to include Lancaster in there. But, but yeah, I, I will be supporting option four, but I would add like Garstang in there as well. And I think, I think that's just about all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Henshaw. Councillor Bailey, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I was finished college, I got a job with Lancashire County Council. And, you know, I've gone through like helping service users, working at different offices, meeting staff who've worked in local government for years and years. And then obviously got myself elected here, you know, so I've kind of been like surrounded by, by local government since coming out of education. I remember when I was like 18 and I started Lancashire County Council, you know, through college you don't really teach about political structures or local democracy, because let's be honest, which teenager kind of cares about that? But when you sort of learn about the sort of two-tier authority system, you're thinking, how on earth does this make sense? As someone who, you know, from college you're thinking, oh, local government should provide the local services. And you learn, oh, no, it doesn't really, you know, you've got two unitaries, you've got a county council, town districts and city councils, you're thinking, who designed, who designed this? So I've always been, you know, for the idea of restructure. So I'm obviously glad we're at the point that we are, we are now. I think it's obviously human nature to not like change. And particularly, you know, we're a bunch as councillors. And particularly, you know, we're a bunch as councillors, you know, when we get ourselves elected, you know, we're all strange because we take such pride in our local communities, et cetera. And therefore, that sometimes means we're more against change. Sometimes you want to protect your status quo. But I do think this change, we need to embrace it because I do think the real beneficiaries of this will be ordinary people. Because the current structure just is confusing to ordinary people. I mean, you know, if a dog gets knocked over in a road, you know, the districts or town councils and more like, you know, clear that up. If it's a deer, it's highways, obstructions to the county council. If it's a badger, you know, who knows whose problem that is, you know, who knows? So moving forward, it means in the future we have that more accountability. So gone are the days where councillors can, and different councils can blame the county council. The county council can blame a parish council, the parish council can blame a district council, or the district council can blame the city council. Now, that shouldn't be the case because the real loser in all of that is a resident who just wants something doing. And, you know, we're all kind of against each other. Yes, you know, councillor Darby might have reiterated, you know, his desire back in nineteen seventy-four to say, you know, maybe we work better together. God knows who came up with that idea of being able to work better together from cross-parties, different, you know, political, different kind of structures of all kind of, you know, designs, et cetera. But I do think with this, whatever government decides the structure of Lancashire will look like, we have to remember that ordinary people, maybe not us as personal individuals, or as councillors, et cetera, will benefit. But ultimately, the people that we currently represent right now will benefit from that just on the basis of better accountability. That's all our residents want. They don't want us to blame each other. We don't want them to blame different councils. And this is what, whatever government decides, whatever this councillor decides, whatever going forward happens, the people that will benefit will be local people, and I think that will be better. I know government has always talked about, whether it's Conservative, Labour, different commentators have talked about efficiencies, it'd be better managed, et cetera. I think ultimately, the best way to sell this, it'll just be simpler to local residents. You know, local services will be run by a local council in Lancashire. That's all I wanted to say, Madam Mayor. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Bailey. Councillor Wise, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with what's been said about the idea that all the councils together could make one submission saying the same. I did go to one meeting of leaders on behalf of Matthew and I was just stunned by it because how they couldn't even agree on the most elementary of matters. And I absolutely agree, LCC is just hopeless. My house recently flooded, so I got onto the county council about it and was told go and buy sunbags. And I have a bad back, can't do that, it was ridiculous. Also, my neighbour had reported previously that we have a problem. And unfortunately, that problem didn't mean water came in my house. I got onto my Reform county councillor on the phone who didn't answer. I've emailed her, she hasn't answered. I've put in a formal complaint to LCC because my house should not have flooded if they'd been doing their job properly. I've still not got an answer. And so, you know, there's no way at all we can continue to justify having Lancashire County Council. I also agree with what's been said, the idea of the two option, you know, two councils is absolutely ridiculous. So I'm not surprised councillor Thompson's supporting it because, of course, he is Reform. But I think anybody who's got any sense will actually see that that is an absolute nonsense and does not move us forward really one iota. We'd have two monolithic councils and it'd be really, really difficult. I understand about the idea of maybe we should have Garstang. At the minute, the government has actually said that you've got to stick to the current boundaries. So it may well be that later we can look at should Garstang, should Penwithham or whatever. But at the minute, we've got to stick to current boundaries. And taking up the point of councillor Henshaw, it's interesting, isn't it? Chorley Council, South Ribble Council, West Lancs Council all support this option. They don't want just the three of them to be together. They want this, they do want them to be together, they don't want us. So they want this option, as does Lancaster and Ribble Valley. And, you know, in terms of size, you know, I've looked at this. I mean, I would prefer smaller councils. I would have loved a greater Preston council, to be absolutely honest. But we're not being offered that or allowed that. And I could have easily made an argument because I've looked at Greater Manchester and Bury is only a hundred and ninety-three thousand. So it's fine for them, isn't it? But we're not being allowed that. So I think that option four gives us the best going forward in terms of community and whatever. And whether there can be tinkering of the edges later, we can no doubt see. But at the minute, that isn't on the cards. So, and I just think it's really exciting, the possibilities, you know, from councillor Henshaw, from a climate perspective, being with Lancaster, I think could be really, really good. Having Ribble Valley, I live in the constituency of Ribble Valley. So I think it'd be great just being in the one council rather than me going to Ribble Valley constituency for voting and then Preston for voting. It's just ridiculous. So I just think this option makes lots of sense and I'm glad we're going to vote on it. So I welcome the support of everybody here from the Lib Dems who are going to support this option. And let's then send a big message to the government and hopefully they might decide to listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dwyer, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't want to repeat a lot of what councillor Wise has actually just said very well. Though I will just respond, as I feel we have to, to our sole Reform representative here in that there was somewhat of a contradiction in trying to claim that it's difficult to assess a democratic, it's difficult to bring together people, you know, in an appropriate way across such a disparate area, bringing together urban and rural areas when you're in support of, at county level, a proposal that would lump together, Fleetwood and Clidrow in one, and Ormscog and Burnley in another. Though I will praise Reform, would you believe, in this chamber for one thing. They have managed to bring together districts around one thing, which was not possible with any other option, which was ridiculing the option for two mega unitaries. It was very impressive. As councillor Wise has already explained, there have been, this option, the option for unitary authorities in the way that it has been presented in the For Lancashire Report has got the most convincing buy-in of districts around Lancashire, particularly in central, north and south Lancashire, where of course we have our greatest links. I just want to pick up on a couple of points with regards to identity and heritage. I think when it comes to this, we have been clear that it is our plan, which we don't know what will look like yet, but there will be plans for committees or neighbourhood councils or some form of civic council or ceremony, ceremonial committee, which will continue the great traditions of our city, including our mayor, our guild, our biddesses, our alderman and such. And also tying in with Lancaster, we see a council in Lancaster that has a great deal of best practice when it comes to promoting heritage, to promoting preservation and promoting tourism too, which is also an important part of our own economy. We've got to look at this as an exciting opportunity. The leader touched on this before, where we look at the opportunities that arise. We will have three university centres within this new North Lancashire Council. We will have two hospitals at certain time being. As a Shire Green Council, that's something that's very much on my own agenda, as I'm sure it is with councillor Colbackys and councillor Greens. We'll also have the National Cyber Hub, which I don't think has yet been addressed, which is a very exciting development just over the border in Ribble Valley, something being delivered by this government, which is a very exciting opportunity, bringing jobs and prosperity to this area. And I do believe I'm right in saying that the North Lancashire Council as proposed in the For Lancashire document would in fact include the fifth largest aeronautical industry cluster, I believe, in the globe, which is a very impressive economic stack to have. So this is a very exciting opportunity, I feel, for Preston. I think we need to look towards what comes as, yes, it is a challenge. I think councillor Potter eloquently put it earlier, as did other Lib Dem colleagues. There is challenges ahead, but it is an exciting challenge and it is one that can bring a great deal of prosperity to our area. Ultimately, we are delivering on what this government has as a manifesto pledge, which falls to deepen our democracy through greater evolution. And I think that this is the way in which we can deliver it best for our area.
Thank you. Councillor Landless, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm coming in fairly late into this debate, so I shall keep it brief because I'm a sort of going round in circles. You know, being a typical Conservative, when I first discovered we had to go into local government reorganisation, I thought, here we go, why do we need it? Blurp, blurp, blurp. And then I sort of studied it further and really the two-tiered system of Lancashire County Council and the district councils has so many disadvantages, it really isn't working efficiently and serving the people of this great county of Lancashire. Just to put it simply, weighing up the options, you know, we've chatted as a group and chatted, thought about it. And, you know, each option isn't absolutely brilliant, but we're happy to support the four unitary option. It has distinct advantages. I mean, I personally, not that Jim McMahon or whoever's going to make this final decision would really care what I think, but it has distinct geographical advantages. Being a rural man and an ex-resident of Ribble Valley, it trusts me a great deal to be thought of being back in a council. Not that I'm doing Preston City down, but it'd be nice to join with Ribble Valley. And I do like Lancaster as a city. But, you know, really my personal view won't really count for a great deal. But in option four, there are distinct advantages. I think the key thing to me is democracy, local democracy. Keeping it slightly smaller keeps us in touch with our electorate. And the new authority will, people will, our people who we serve will understand it better. And it should work, the social services, care for the elderly, education should work more efficiently. And it makes sense that the combination that we put together will work. It's going to be very diverse. You've got Morecambe in the top North West, which has its problems, but it's in, you know, the advantage of investment in Morecambe. And you've got Preston, and then you've got a huge amount of rural communities. But I think the advantage of integrating two cities, two university cities with rural and with Morecambe and what have you, makes a very diverse authority. You have a danger with some of the other options that the North Lancashire bit becomes very rural and not a lot else. So, you know, I will keep it brief. I could waffle on for all sorts of economic advantages, but everybody's said quite clearly. I mean, the problem with option three, the three unitary option, is quite a good one. It makes quite a strong case. But I think, as been pointed out by other speakers, the biggest problem was that particularly South Ribble and Chorley didn't want us. So it really was a non-starter right from the start. I don't want to, you know, put poor scorn on it, but that was one of the key problems. And the two unitary authorities is just far too big. You might as well have one huge authority as those two massive ones. You've got West Lancashire at one end and Barn Oldwick nearly at the other. It's huge. It's about hundred-odd miles or whatever. Anyway, I'll just say that we will be supporting the four unitary option. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Right, I don't think I've got any more speaker. Sorry, councillor. No, you don't want to speak. Do you want to speak councillor Peak? Yeah, because I'm going to do all the speakers now and then I'm going to go for a fifteen-minute adjournment. Oh, why do you want more? All right, okay. Let me do councillor Peak first. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've gone around the block a couple of times. Obviously, a three or a four unitary is the obvious choice, which choice I personally prefer the four, not the alt-four. If I went anywhere near North End and said that I'd voted for an amalgamation with Donkey Lashes, I would fear for my safety. However, I'll not go through the reasons why, but I do reiterate what other people have said. Four is the best option. Four would also contain the geographic centre of the UK, which if they ever decide to relocate Parliament, would be a good argument for bringing it somewhere near here. The other thing is that also within the four option, from a personal point of view, I would then be in the same authority as where my ancestors' court of arms hangs in Lancaster Castle. So other reasons, which nobody else has given, is that the four option has the greatest support amongst the participating councils, the fourteen participating councils. I discount LCC because they will not participate after reorganisation. Two of the unitary authorities in the four option have one hundred per cent of the participating authorities supporting it. The others, zero per cent, but overall it's forty-three per cent of the participating authorities in unitary four, or the four unitary option, support it. Of the others, the three option only has twenty-nine per cent, the five option has fourteen per cent, the alt-four option has only seven per cent, i.e. one authority, and the two option has zero per cent. So the four option has the greatest percentage support from participating authorities. And finally, this would be a great opportunity. We won't get it, but it would be a great opportunity for this authority and possibly others to push for proportional representation, to support the resolution that was passed in this chamber a few months ago. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Now, I don't think we have any more speakers. I'm looking very quickly. So what I intend now, it'll have to be, we're going to say fifteen minutes, leader, because you need to agree your form of words. The officers need to get that put together, it needs to be typed up and it needs to be circulated to all members of this council. But if we say fifteen minutes and we're promptly back in here, that'll take us to what? Twenty, twenty-five, four-twenty according to that clock or twenty-four, twenty-two at the latest. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
How many cabinet here today? Two that are not, I'm going to. I'm not going to stay. We're going to be here for cabinet. Gentlemen.
Right, please be seated, everybody, thank you. Okay, everybody, welcome back. So the leader has made an alteration and I understand you've all got it on your seats, is that correct councillor Brown? Yep.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, we've listened to the arguments about having a more direct version of democracy with this. I mean, it's always a little symbolic, because it is the cabinet that is constitutionally going to make the decision. So obviously, they've had a brilliant debate, I don't really want to prolong that too much, because I think it's all been covered pretty well. My understanding is there's an amendment, so I'm going to propose that we go for that, obviously, yeah, that we go for councillors asked to remember, we recommend that cabinet approves a four Lancashire business case, which is this page here. My understanding is there'll now be an amendment, so we'll obviously debate and vote on that and then we'll go back to the original, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
So councillor Derby, do I understand you have an amendment?
That is correct. Do you need a second for the proposal first?
But councillor Rawlinson is second, are you seconded? Yeah, because, yeah.
Taken.
Yeah, it's taken, we've taken that, yeah, that's fine. So you're going to move your amendment? Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I don't propose that we prolong the debate any further, we've had the backwards and forwards on it. I would just say then, of course, the amendment is to back the three unitaries alternative. In the unlikely event that that fails, I will be very happy to pass the, to vote for the four authority amendment as well, as I said. That is also a good option, thank you.
Second please, thank you, councillor Colbacky.
A polite way, Madam Mayor. There's a lot of good things in four and I acknowledge those, but I stand by what I said before. I think three is the most viable option for us and the most advantageous in terms of future prosperity, efficiency. Thank you very much.
Back to the leader please now, thank you. Sum up, don't you, or want to say anything about, and then we go to the vote, is that right? Yep, thank you.
Yeah, I suggest we go to the vote and why don't we have a name vote? If you want to admit this, because it is a truly historic decision. So I think we need to have a name vote on the three and the four, Madam Mayor.
On the amendment, councillor Brown?
Oh, this is something.
On both.
On both, right, okay, right, gosh. So we're now voting on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Usual protocol for name vote and just a reminder, this is the amendment as moved by councillor Derby. Councillor Actar? The chamber, no?
Did he say Actar? Sorry, I'm a little hard of hearing, Actar is against.
Thank you. Councillor Bailey? Councillor Brooks? Councillor Brown? Councillor Close? Councillor Crowe? Not in the chamber? Councillor Derby? Councillor Desai?
Thank you. Lady, do you want to sum up or say anything else? Or do you want us to move to the vote? It's up to you. Thank you.
I just need to vote, Madam Mayor, thank you.
And we've already requested a named vote, Chief Executive, so if we can do that, please, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the substantive motion, starting with, again, Counselor Actar.
In favour. Four, sorry.
That's fine. Thank you. Counselor Bailey. Counselor Brooks. Counselor Brown. Counselor Close. Counselor Darby. Counselor Desai. Counselor Duke. Counselor Dwyer. Counselor Green. Counselor Guyes. Counselor Henshaw. Counselor Hindle. Have I missed Counselor Guyes, sorry? Counselor Guyes. Counselor Hindle. Counselor Hodgson. Counselor Holmes. Counselor Ickbell. Counselor Kelly. Counselor Khan. Counselor Corbaki. Counselor Landless. Counselor McMahon. Counselor Morgan. Counselor Natha. Counselor Patel. Counselor Peake. Counselor Potter. Counselor Raesbeck. Counselor Rawlinson. Counselor Rutter. Counselor Saxena. Counselor Sawa. Counselor Thompson. Counselor Ward. Non-Chamberlain, Counselor Mr Whittem. Counselor Mrs Whittem. Counselor Wise.
Thank you, Members. Thank you, sorry about that. Right, okay, so the amendment has fallen, Counselor Darby, and now we go back to the substantive, which is with the amendment which you have on your chairs, which we discussed before. Counselor Rawlinson, you seconded originally, and you seconded this amendment. Do you wish to speak on this?
I'm not really speaking, I just wanted to support the work that Matthew's put into this and the officers and the decision that the Labour Group has come to. My views on this are probably radically different to anyone else in this room. I just want to protect Preston Gill and the traditions of Preston, and I don't want to see Preston Castle disappear. But in the position we're in, I think Matthew has done extremely well, and I support it.
Thank you. Leader, do you want to sum up or say anything else? Or do you want us to move to the vote? It's up to you, thank you.
I just need to vote, Madam Mayor, thank you.
And we've already requested a named vote, Chief Executive, so if we can do that, please, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.